So there's no one for the first or second public hearing. The third, the short-term rentals, turns into short-term debt.
Okay.
Debt. Debt. And then split for public. Do you want to keep? Two.
Um.
Bob.
Yeah. Let me just all keep in order. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wilson, let's bow for prayer. Almighty God, during this time of beautiful season change, we offer our thanks to you for all your many blessings. While we who live here in North Georgia feel your presence, we humbly ask for your grace and peace to the innocent folks suffering from war. As we hear of the atrocities happening not only in Europe, but even those suffering from hate crimes in America, we beg for your healing. Be with each of us on this council as we continue to serve. We pray in the holy name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen. Call to order our November 2nd, 2023 council meeting. Again, with a consideration to approve tonight's agenda. Are there any changes or revisions, additions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. Begin tonight before our business meeting, we have three public hearings. These are three public hearings for public input and then council discussion. Public hearing, item A, public hearing and discussion of annual update to capital improvements plan and five-year short-term work plan for impact fees. Ms. Anderson?
Good evening. Um, so this is a public hearing for the discussion of the annual update to the capital improvement plan and the five-year short-term work program for the impact fees. Um, as required by the state, we have to update our annual impact fee every year. Um, the deadline for this is February 28, 24. So today is the public hearing to get any feedback or any input from the public and to address any questions that you may have. So as a part of your package, you have the annual financial report for this past fiscal year, um, as well as the work plan, which consists of projects related to fire protection, parks and wrecks, road improvements, and, um, police services for the next, um, five years, so 2024 through 2028. And these projects that have been identified will be funded by, um, impact fees and other sources. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer any of them.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. We will open the public hearing. We had no one to speak, so we will close the public hearing. Open up for council. Questions for Ms. Anderson or discussion? We had a presentation from Ms. Anderson at the last meeting. Are there any questions?
There's no action needed tonight, so at the next meeting, there will be a resolution to transmit to the state for the review. And then if they have any comments, we'll address and bring back to you to adopt by February.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Move on to the next public hearing, item B, public hearing for five-year update to Canton's comprehensive plan. Ms. Anderson?
So again, this is, um, another requirement by the state to remain, um, qualified local government status. This project also has to be, um, approved and adopted by February 28 of next year. Um, same thing as mentioned in the, um, update last meeting. Um, everything is in here that we have to have all the planned elements, short-term work program, report of accomplishments. Everything relates to, um, the, you know, the needs and assessments, the needs and goals. Um, also, this is a public hearing, so if there's any input from the public, we will address that. Any questions from you, we'll address that. Um, again, any changes that need to be made, we'll make them and bring it back to you at the next meeting to be routed to the state for review.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. At this point, we will open the public hearing. We had no one sign up for a public hearing on the five-year comprehensive plan. We'll close the public hearing. Open up to council. Any questions? Ms. McGrew?
I have a question for Mr. Dyer, if that's all right.
Certainly.
Do the public hearing rules apply to, uh, public hearings concerning, um, work, things that we do is the same as a developer would be having a public hearing? Is it where the public will not be allowed to speak next week on the subject that we have had public hearings on tonight?
Uh, no.
They will not?
It is not subject to the same rules. Our concerns with the, in the zoning world is, uh, the legal part of that. This is just a required public hearing, so you can take other input anytime you want.
Great. Thank you so much.
Any further questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. We'll move on to item C, our third public hearing. It's public hearing for code amendment to provide for short-term rentals as a home occupation and to add short-term, short-term rentals as a permitted use in certain zoning districts. And, uh, Mr. Dyer, I believe you had something to say before Mr. Green introduces this item.
Or part of it.
Part of it.
The, so if you'll recall, there's two different ordinances we, we will be adopting at the next meeting. The first one is the one adding short-term rentals as a business under the general code. Uh, that's the one we did several months ago, and we're just been holding. Um, and then there's the UDC changes. That's what we're having the public hearing about. I think in the agenda packet, through our emails, back and forth of drafts and things, uh, the UDC one did not get attached. So, um, the only thing that's changed in either ordinance from your earlier drafts was adding the possibility of commercial buildings having a short-term rental. So we had to change the definition of short-term rental to include a space in a commercial building that otherwise qualifies as a kitchen, bathroom, separate quarters. Uh, we also talked through emails with the staff about, uh, in a commercial, do you want to have a separate entrance? Those issues, so we can talk about that after the public hearing. But I did, I just wanted to say before the public hearing started, uh, which categories in the zoning ordinance, the UDC, were proposing to allow them. So that would be all residential, uh, categories that exist now. Of course, they're going to change. Uh, in addition, planned development, neighborhood commercial, general commercial, and central business district. So those additional commercial zoning would be allowed under the proposed ordinance.
Thank you for the clarification. Mr. Green, anything to add?
I'm okay with that. I have nothing else to add. Mr. Dyer's has prepared the ordinance and he knows it inside and out.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, we will open up the public hearing. We did have one resident, uh, sign up, Mr. Richard Trenbeth. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Richard Ian Trenbeth. I live at 114 Twilight Overlook. My personal experience is that when people looking for short-term rentals here in Canton, they usually have family ties to this area. They may be coming for a wedding, a graduation, to visit a child at Reinhardt, or coming for their kids' sports tournaments. We should welcome them to the area, even if they are looking for an alternative to a basic hotel room. The short-term rental ordinance and the zoning code changes that have been proposed by the council are reasonable, well thought out. I would encourage each of you to vote yes to adopt them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That is the only, um, person we had sign up, so we will close the public hearing. Open up to council. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Ms. Smith?
Uh, Mr. Dyer, in our agenda packet, it says, uh, staff recommends approval of this code amendment, but are you saying we need to wait until the next meeting?
Yeah, I think we're going to vote at the next meeting, and we can vote on both ordinances at the same time.
Okay, gotcha.
We can adopt the use as a allowed use and then adopt the zoning categories where it's allowed.
Yeah, two separate ordinances, correct. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Moving into our business meeting now. You had in your packet, uh, the draft minutes from our council retreat held October 15th through the 17th. Any changes or revisions to those minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye. Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. You also have the draft minutes from our council meeting on October 19th. Are any changes, revisions, or motions?
Move to first.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. We have informational items this evening, the review of September financials. Ms. Forrester?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me all right?
Good evening. Maybe a little, a little closer.
Close. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, before I get started, thank you. So we have September financials attached to the agenda, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I didn't want to spend a whole lot of time on these because we'll continue to accrue expenses and revenues as items come in. A lot of things are in transit. A lot of our capital projects, construction projects, we're still waiting for our engineers and our construction managers to review invoices for work that was completed prior to September 30. But overall, we're in pretty good shape. All of our, most of our funds have a positive change in fund balance, with the exception of the sanitation fund and impact fees. Impact fees is not a huge concern. The reason it's a negative fund balance is because we're drawing on our reserves to complete some construction projects. What I did want to take some time to review today were restricted revenue sources because I'm oftentimes asked to explain revenue classifications that are outside the general fund and the enterprise funds. And remember, the enterprise funds are funds that are run like businesses, water fund, sanitation, stormwater, kind of like an electric utility would be. But the restricted revenue sources can be confusing, a little complicated, and generally generate a lot of questions. So I wanted to address a few objectives. How and why our budgets fluctuate so much in the special restricted revenue funds? That revenues are largely a product of the consumer or the user. We rarely change rates in those funds. And that the uses of the money, the fees or the taxes that are collected, are generally predetermined and planned. So when I started putting this together, it got pretty lengthy, pretty fast. So I'm just going to give you a brief introduction. And if you have questions, I'll be glad to answer at this time or at our next meeting. So the, this slide and the following slide are taken directly from our budget presentation a few months ago. I didn't change anything because sometimes people have questions on presentations given earlier in the year. Except for that orange box. I put that orange box there. So today, we're talking about the special revenue funds, which are confiscated assets. Those are from police, um, incidents where there's arrest and there are assets involved, either large sums of cash, vehicles, jewelry, sometimes weapons, that those items are held in the confiscated asset fund. Our ARPA fund, which is our American Rescue Plan Act fund, most people are pretty familiar with that one. The TAD, that's our tax allocation district in the downtown area. The Hotel Motel Tax Fund. And to point out, the Hotel Motel Tax, those are revenues paid by folks that are staying in the hotels. It's usually not your local residence. The Rental Car Tax Fund, self-explanatory. And then our Capital Projects Funds, Cap, Canton Building Authority, those are used largely to fund extreme projects like a reservoir dam. SPOST funds, those are our special purpose local option sales taxes. Road and Sidewalk Fund and the Impact Fees Fund. And Impact Fee Fund, that's where we'll end up tonight. But that's also, I'm piggybacking on what Ms. Brittany Anderson started talking about. So this is a slide directly from the budget slide earlier in the year. And so I wanted to talk about some of the differences. Looking at the ARPA Fund, 2022 actual expenditures, we spent, because we realized, over $10 million of federal funding. We were able to put that in the general fund and put that to use, mostly for land acquisitions. You'll see that the 2023 and 2024 budget numbers are reduced because we've almost utilized all of our federal funding on that source. The TAD Fund, we're still trying to figure out what our revenues are going to be. We haven't made any expenditures yet, although we were anticipating some expenditures in the budget. Hotel Motel Tax Fund, you'll see, is increasing substantially. That's from coming out of the pandemic and adding two more hotels. Rental Car Tax Fund, it's not that people are renting more cars or that we're receiving more rents. It's because we're now utilizing reserves. And that's something that you can see in our line item budget that's posted on the city's website. If you go to the finance department, we post every revenue by line item and every expenditure by line item. And you'll see that we're going to utilize over $159,000 of reserves in fiscal year 2024. Canton Building Authority has decreased because we've paid down some debt. SPOST 7 Fund is decreasing, not because sales taxes are falling off, but because that fund is closing in June of 2024. SPOST 7, you'll see, has over $1,500,000 in it, not because that's really a new tax. It's just a continuation of our existing SPOST in a new time period with a new intergovernmental agreement. And the Impact Fees Funds, while our building and development has slowed down in the last year, we're, again, like I mentioned earlier, drawing on reserves to complete some projects. So here's some definitions, special revenue and capital projects funds. This is the main gist, so if you can understand that, you're, you're doing pretty good. Both special revenue and capital projects funds are considered to have purpose restrictions, meaning everything that was in that orange box on that previous slides are required to be used on certain activities. Fund balances, that means your assets are in excess of your liabilities at the end of each year, remain restricted or assigned to specific purposes. When we finish a project, if it comes under budget, the money doesn't just get spent willy-nilly. It has to go to a certain purpose. These restrictions are usually a combination of state laws and local code ordinances. They're also audited annually by independent auditors, in addition to the Georgia Finance Officers Association, the Government, uh, Department of Audits and Accounts, and the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. These entities all look for completeness and compliance with our spending in these funds. So here's a few pictures of some projects we've completed just in the last 24 months, really. On the left is the library summer reading program because we don't, we contribute about $20,000 to $30,000 a year out of our rental car taxes to fund the library program here at RT Jones. The center photo is our remodeled revamped basketball court at Bowling Park with the new goals, the new updated mural, the Unite mural. And then you'll see a family of vis, with visitors standing in front of our Canton, Georgia wildflower mural. Those two items were provided by Hotel Motel Funds, which are required to fund tourism, activities, advertising, events that are going to draw people to our city. Continuing on that special revenue funds, those pictures we just saw. The definition, special revenue funds are used to account for and report the proceeds, proceeds, incoming amounts of specific revenue sources that are restricted or committed to expenditure for specific purposes. These could be operating expenditures or capital, depending on the fund and all the laws and rules that regulate it. And as I said before, in the orange box from the earlier slides, this is the ARPA Fund, confiscated assets, Hotel Motel Tax, Rental Car Tax, and the TAD Fund. Moving on to Capital Projects Funds. So the pictures on the left, I think a lot of people appreciate those pictures on the left. That is the intersection at Reservoir Drive and Teasley Middle School. When my two oldest children were going to Teasley Middle School, which is on the right of the photo, I had to deal with that top picture. No light, lots of traffic, speeding cars. But now we are living in the world with the bottom photo. We have left and right turn lanes. We have pedestrian crosswalks and traffic lights. That was built and funded by the Impact Fees Fund. The photos on the right are all grouped together. That one is a really tall tower. I don't know if you can make it out. This picture might be too small. Some electronic equipment with lots of lights. And then our 911 operations center. We spent over $1,200,000 on, uh, buying into the county's communications and emergency system. That's, um, out of the SPOST fund. So the definition for capital projects funds, capital projects are used to account for and report financial resources that are restricted, committed, or assigned to expenditures for capital outlays, including acquisition or construction of capital facilities and other capital assets, often governed by a capital improvement element, such as was presented earlier tonight, or an intergovernmental agreement. Usually, that's with the county or other municipalities. And the capital projects funds again are the Canton Building Authority, the Impact Fee Fund, Road and Sidewalk Fund, and our SPOST funds. So tying back into Impact Fees Funds, which were introduced earlier this evening, I just provided a couple of links there. If anyone wanted to dive deeper into the rules and regulations, what governs some impact fee funds. And if you just wanted to hear the highlights of what you'll find in all that documentation, it'll review that impact fee funds are one-time fees charged to land developers to help defray the cost of expanding capital facilities to serve the new growth. Some examples of recent charges, I have some that have gone through in the last couple of months. Some homes, single-family homes that are going up along, uh, Bliss Parkway, might pay about $730 per property in impact fees. That includes your admin impact fee, fire impact fee, and your police impact fee. And those are on homes that are about 3,000 square feet. A commercial property, an HOA clubhouse, will pay $4,881 in impact fees. And that is on a little over 2,000-square-foot clubhouse. Impact fees are paid before the first 2x4 is set up. So this is after plan review, but before construction, and that helps fund our other projects. Expenditures of impact fees are going to be listed on that CIE annual update that was presented earlier this evening. What's important to note is that expenditures from the Impact Fee Fund must have a minimum 10-year life. And these can include things that we have listed, but also fire trucks, land acquisition, and engineering cost. And that wraps up my presentation. I know I threw a lot at you. I might have created more questions than I answered, but that's okay. If you have questions about any particular project or any fund, or where to find things on our website, just send me a message, or I can answer some things right here.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Mr. Forrester. Very informative. Um, well, that presentation, is it posted on the website for citizens as well?
I don't think it's posted yet, but we can put it on there.
Okay, well, that would be on the finance department.
We could put it there, yes.
Okay, great. Any questions for Ms. Forrester? Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. Ms. Forrester, two questions, and I don't mean to blindside you, so if you don't have the answer ready right now, you know, email or, or whatever. The car rental tax, is that allowed to accumulate over time until we have a project to use that money to complete?
Yes, it's preferred that we spend revenues in the current year. But like I said, we're still accruing, so oftentimes, we don't know what our total revenues are going to be until several months later.
I lied. I have three questions. Um, does this apply to SPOST? And I know SPOST is designated funds for certain things. But is SPOST money allowed to lay dormant until that project is ready to be started?
Generally, they like you to use them, but it is, since it's a capital projects fund, it's written with the understanding that it may take some time to get projects shovel-ready. And it, it will hold in the SPOST fund.
So we don't have to give the money back if we don't use it by 2025 or '26?
I'm not aware of any cutoff.
No.
Okay, great. Third, in case, in our audit, and we, we do have that third-party audit, um, they discover that we have used some funds improperly, what happens?
Normally, we have to put it back, and putting it back would probably mean taking money out of the general fund.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Wilson?
I, I don't have really a question, except I did want to point out a couple of things. The ARPA funds impacted our budget quite a bit year before last, and that's a one-time-only thing that bloated our budget at that time, that I think people need to realize that that $10 million was not something we requested. That was, those were ARPA funds given to us by the federal government to alleviate some of the effects of COVID, correct? And the second thing is that even though a lot of things are impacted by a new building, impact funds can only be used for, I think, seven, in seven areas. Like, it, new buildings and new developments increase attendance in school, but schools is not one of the, the, uh, areas in which impact funds can be used, correct?
Our impact fee funds, correct.
Right. Are there, well, only seven things that you can use impact funds for?
The state of Georgia does not have an impact fee for education.
Right.
I know that's one of the things that Dr. Petrazello used to argue a lot with the legislature, but, but there's not one for education. In the city, what we have one for is police, fire, uh, parks and recreation, uh, uh, roads or streets. And then there's a small piece that's admin that can be used for the studies and everything associated with the collection of all those fees and funds.
And Ms. Forrester, just to clarify, you showed, uh, figures from the 2024 budget showing $56 million from these, these restricted funds and out of our budget. Is that correct?
Well, that also includes the enterprise.
Enterprise, so.
Fix.
But just clarify, that's $56 million out of the total budget that are enterprise funds or restricted funds that are coming from sources outside of, over, not property taxes, but these are restricted funds being used for capital projects and things in our budget that costs associated with those funds, coming from SPOST or enterprise funds or from water sewer, the, the new sewer plant construction.
Correct.
Something that also substantially increased our budget, so.
And you would, you can generally say that a large part of the monies in the orange box did not come directly from City of Canton citizens. A lot of times, the Hotel Motel, the Impact Fee Fund, the Rental Car Tax, the SPOST, those are from countywide or visitors that, that are paying the taxes.
Definitely. But the projects those funds are used on are
Are all within the
City of Canton projects, certainly that benefit our citizens. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Thank you, Ms. Forrester. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Do we have any announcements? Move into our 10-minute public input. We have three citizens signed up. Mr. Darrell Rice, if you would, just come forward, state your name and address into the microphone. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Darrell Rice, 212 Crescent Moon Way, Canton. Mr. Mayor, is it appropriate for me to talk about the Canton Down Payment Assistance Program that's coming up on the agenda for discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I've been very excited about this down payment assistance program ever since it was first suggested, and very pleased that our city approved this for those who serve in, in various areas of service in our community. And so when I came across this on the agenda, I thought, well, for a guy who's been in the nonprofit space for 50 years, maybe I could say something affirming. And so I started doing some research, thinking, how can I say something good to encourage you to pursue this? And I Googled the number of nonprofits in Cherokee County, and I was shocked. One thou, if, if the numbers are correct that I saw, there are 1,633 501(c)(3) organizations in Cherokee County. That's a lot. And I think the intention behind the amendment is to kind of broaden the tent and be inclusive. But I scrolled through, just perused that list of 1,600-plus nonprofits, and having been in the space for decades, I recognized that a lot of them are just mom-and-pop organizations with probably no paid employees. And then I looked again at what you had approved back in June, and you get very, a little more specific with providers and teachers and healthcare workers. For first responders, you say police, fire, EMT. For educators, you say employed by accredited educational institutions. And for healthcare providers, you say employed by licensed healthcare provider. I would just encourage you to get a little more specific. I would hate to broaden this so large that it minimizes the access to the funds that it was originally intended for. And I think this could be a great recruitment tool for those kinds of persons coming into our community to add to the benefit package that they receive by their employment that comes to us through the city council. So I just kind of offer that as part of the conversation, and hopefully it'll be well-received. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Chris Evert? Welcome.
My name's Chris Evert, and I live at 133 Hidden Trail Court in Canton. And I come here tonight to formally ask the council to take a look at the Canton senior exemption to property taxes. That was a, an amount of $112,000 that was passed back in 2001. At that time, that exemption exempted 75% of a senior's home value, if you assume $150,000 net taxable amount. In today's dollars, we'd be lucky if that covers 25% of the home value. I know this personally, since I wrote the check last night. My 2023 Canton City tax was $674.35. In 2021, that number was $445.39. That's a thirty, that's a 51% increase in three years. Now, I don't know how much social security increased over that same period, but I would suffice it to say a 151%. A lot has happened since 2001, and I would simply ask the council to take a look at modifying that amount when you take into effect other ta, other cities and municipalities in the area. Now, all of this comes to light because of the dramatic increase in a senior's home value. I'd just like to point out that that increase in value is funny money to a senior. We're never going to see that money, we're never going to touch that money. That money's only going to be touched by our kids when they settle our estate. So when council says you're doing this to improve the values, home value, all I hear is my taxes are being increased. So I would like to respectfully ask you to take a look at modifying that senior exemption. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Evert. Mr. Thomas Weaver?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Thomas Weaver, and I reside at 131 Old Merritt, Canton. No one asked me to do this tonight, but I felt compelled to do so. Since you're going to choose to discuss the possibility of renewing your city manager's contract publicly, I wanted to make a statement. Consider that later on tonight's agenda. I wanted to share with you that has been often said, and I have sat from the seats and listened attentively to members of council even, who have shared that when attending conventions with the Georgia Municipal Association, how wonderful and how lucky it is that we have Mr. Peppers on board as a member of Team Canton. I've also heard other members of council say that we could never hope to pay Mr. Peppers enough for what he does, although we know everyone in the room does, that he can make so much somewhere else, even more perhaps. Again, no one asked me to do this, but I wanted to share publicly that Mr. Peppers and members of his administration have been better-than-good to me, and they have moved Canton forward in a very wonderful way, very different from where it was as a city 10, 20 years ago when I was a child. And the streets were bare, and there was nothing going on on the square. And Canton was not in its denim days. Mr. Mayor, members of council, if it should meet with your approval, I would ask that you consider strongly and, and put a good measure of favorable consideration into the opportunity of renewing Mr. Pepper's contract. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council, and thank you for recognizing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Move into old business, item A. Discussion and possible action on design request appeal for CDR 2307-128 at 152 Prominence Point Parkway. Ms. Anderson?
Hi. So at a previous meeting, this was brought to you because the applicant for 152 Prominence Point Parkway submitted an appeal to a denial that the Design Review Committee gave them to paint their building. Just want to remind you that the painting took place before they received or submitted for design review. Once they submitted for design review, they were denied to paint, but they were allowed to do the other changes. The reason for the denial is that it poses a negative impact to surrounding or adjacent properties. The applicant would like to appeal, and they have requested that you hear them. We have someone here today to speak to you for their side of the story.
Okay. We have the project applicant, would like to address council on the appeal.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Jake Hildebrand and Graham Commercial Contractors. I'm the, the general contractor for Coosa Valley Credit Union, which we're looking forward to being here in Canton. I'd like to start with, I believe y'all have seen the before and after photos I gave. I don't know if you guys have seen them yet. I've got a couple of photos there of some before and afters of the building, as well as to note that we've actually done these exact same buildings recently. That's the actual building that's already done here in Woodstock. It's identical floor plan, exterior, interiors of the building here at 152 Prominence Point Parkway. I'd like to also note in those photos, you will see that there are other locations of other businesses less than, you know, a few miles away, some just down the road, that have recently been painted and since 2022, being that the masonry has, has in fact been painted. I'd like to say that on June 14th, I myself came here with paint samples, stamped drawings, went to the second floor of this floor, and spoke to Craig Cataldo on behalf of us getting ready to paint this building. At that point, he told me it was not in the historic district, that it shouldn't be a problem to start priming the building, therefore our building is half primed. About a day and a half into half priming it, gentlemen from, from, with you guys stopped by there, stopped us immediately, which is fine, stopped us immediately, I raised a red flag, so I immediately started working with, with Brittany here on trying to, you know, move forward and progress in, in the right, right direction. I would like to state that we started that based on the conversations I had with Craig Cataldo, the young lady next to him, and the, the larger gentleman to the, to the right of him upstairs on the second floor. Stating that we were not in historic districts, and that it should not be an issue to prime the building, but to move forward. At that point, that same day, we started working towards the Canton on Lama, I believe is the website. And so here we are today with that. As you can see, Chuck's Auto Repair is just down the road there, and it was painted in January of 2022, masonry. A Quick Bell Bonds, what it was, is now a Georgia Exteriors LLC, has also been painted since February, I believe, of 2022. We look to, to, you know, bring light and stuff to that area. We like, you know, they're beautiful buildings that we do, we take, we take craftsmanship and pride in them. You know, you guys can see the before and after photos. That's, that's really all I got. Any questions?
Ms. Anderson, anything else to add?
So two things to clarify. The examples provided by them that are two miles within this location are not within the immediate plaza. If you pay attention to the plaza where there's the Publix and Winnie, Daxby's, all of those are brick materials. Nothing in that plaza or across the street from that plaza is painted brick. The examples that they mentioned, one is Chuck Masonry, that's 3.2 miles away, it is not within the vicinity. The other one, I can't tell you the name of it, but they say it's 1.5 miles away from there. So again, not within that immediate plaza that this location is in. Second, I have an email from Mark Cochran, is Sevion, I don't know if that's pronounced correctly, but Sevion Design Lab. They sent an email on May 2nd to Eric Fortner saying that Coosa Valley would like to do some renovations to the building. And so he lists the proposed renovations. They are replacement of countertops, upgrade of outdated HVAC units with newer models while retaining the existing ductwork, removal of vinyl wall covering following by repainting, removal and replacement of existing Acousal ceiling tiles with the current ceiling tile grids remain in place, replacement of existing lay-in light fixture with modern lay-in LED style fixtures, installation of new flooring coverings, installation of exterior through wall ATM with the unit safety deposit view room. And in Eric's response on May 8th, he identified and provided a response for each one of those. And at the end of number seven, where it talks about the exterior drive-through ATM, he said you may need a building permit. And then at the very end, he says, this project may also require an architectural review since you're making changes to the exterior of the building. And so from the staff perspective of this process, I was not made aware until they were priming. And that's when someone went out to make a stop.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So we've heard the appeal, we have a questions, discussion amongst council. Mr. Water?
So ultimately, the process wasn't followed? Is that, that's basically the gist of it?
Correct. So there's no permit for painting in the historic district or projects outside of the historic district that have to go through the design review process, but there is an approval for painting for both. So if you are painting in the historic district, you have to get a COA permit, whether it is an administrative COA or a COA approved by HBC. And if it's outside of the historic district, you have to get a design review approval from the Design Review Committee.
And so, and you had referenced earlier, like, an architectural review, right, which would have?
Which would have.
Would have caught?
Yep.
That part of it?
If they submitted for it, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And every, every project, new project in the city goes through the same process, correct?
Should, correct.
Okay. Any other questions? There are no questions or comments, is there?
Um, Mr. Peppers, when we've gone, or Ms. Anderson, when we've gone through this before, uh, we put, the city put a process in place, didn't it, that said if you're requesting interior changes, isn't there a notice that goes up that says exterior changes require a different, like, in red or something? Didn't we?
As plans are submitted through Lama, based on the plans that are submitted, there's a routing of the process through staff for reviews. And so in this particular instance, there was not a plan submitted for exterior modifications at that time, and that's why it didn't get routed.
Gotcha.
So when code compliance saw the work being done, they triggered a stop work order so that it could go through a process and review.
And the staff is concerned because the master plan in this area, at the whole entire plaza at Prominence Point, is all red brick architecture. Correct?
And so there was a stop order issued. But the painting, the painting still occurred after the stop order, or?
The painting occurred before that.
Oh, before, okay. The total painting, not just the priming?
Uh, the priming occurred before.
They have not completed the work.
Right. It's not finished at this point.
So the photos we're seeing is just showing the priming, correct? So the photos we're seeing are just the priming, or is this a different location?
This is a different location, but there's also photos that just show the priming.
That's right, okay. Correct. Okay. Ms. Wilson?
Did you say that if it had come before you at the proper time, you could have, you would have approved it?
The decision could have possibly been the same because they're painting brick, and it would have been the same response as far as a denial.
So you're saying?
So they could still very well come before you for an appeal, either way.
Yeah, I know, we've set a precedence in the city. We have two buildings that were painted before approval was given that we have allowed because they'd already been painted. So we do have a precedence.
And I would say that we also need to maintain the integrity of the process. If, you know, we've got processes in place, they should be, they should be followed. Otherwise, why do we have it in the first place?
The examples of Chuck's mechanic and the other one, are those, those are not in master-planned plazas with red brick, is that correct?
Those two that I mentioned are not these, these.
No, I'm just being, I'm just asking. And neither Mint Dental is not in a master-planned red brick plaza, is it?
And that was, that was one of the comments, I think, that came up during that meeting was the fact that, you know, this one is actually part of a shopping center that was all developed together as one project at the time versus some of the others that have been painted brick that are not part of a shopping center but standalone out parcels.
The two I mentioned are not part of, well, one's a part of a shopping center, over, the Walmart Center, the dentistry that we approved that is already painted.
But it was a separate art, out parcel and separate building.
Right. And the other was, the other was a freestanding building.
That's correct.
Yep.
Well, to echo what Mr. Waterman said, if, if you can just paint a building and then ask forgiveness, then what is the process even for?
So what, what would need to be done to mitigate this? Is this a, is this a sand blasting event? Yes?
Okay, uh, so, I actually had my brick guy, my, my brick mason, Al Cassidy, has been on site, I met with him today, to try to find the exact matching brick on those buildings in that plaza, and they do not manufacture them, they do not make them, you cannot get that brick anymore. I actually have the list in my notebook there, I should, I have their, their, the original manufacturer, who they sold to, when they sold, when they quit making it, so you would have to media blast that building, and if you do that, it would affect integrity and everything else of the brick on that building. It's an actual prime, it's in the cracks, it's everywhere, half the building's gray primed right now, so it would be a, a large, very expensive ordeal to go back and try to media blast the brick off of that building. So, and a lot of, and we would not have painted this building without the assumptions that we've made or had gotten from y'all's guys upstairs. You know, we do a lot of work and a lot of other, like Rome, Cartersville, and areas where that's a lot of places are different, I guess, we should say, you know, we're, we're trying, but it's a very expensive process to have to remove it, and it will damage the brick, so, and there is no finding or that manufacturer brick is no more in business, so. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to ask on the, on the process, we've heard the appeal, are we, we're not required to rule on the appeal tonight, are we?
Says possible action.
Says possible action?
I wouldn't mind waiting.
We're just hearing this information now, could we take this under consideration and possibly rule at the next meeting?
Sure.
Unless council has a different.
I do have a question, if we, if that's what we decide to, decide another, another time, more details into the process of, of mitigating that, that the primer, the, called the blasting process, said it'll destroy the integrity of the brick, just details into that, and if there's anything else that can be done to, to restore it, but I'd like to have some more detail on it.
I'd like to hear that from staff as well.
I will move to table this decision until the next city council meeting.
We have a motion in a second to table to the next mount council meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion, thank you. Moving to new business now, item A, discussion of the two twenty, two thousand twenty-four proposal for a classification compensation study. Ms. Waters, welcome.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and Council. As we all know, our team is, you know, one of the city's greatest assets, maintaining that integrity, not only supporting our current staff and making sure we're staying current with market, with salaries and the job descriptions, but it also makes us very, it helps to, help us to attract the new hires when we need those, because job descriptions are very important to keep those up to date, and with small entities, you have combined jobs, so it's real important to have that extra help on that. We use Condrin Associates back in two thousand fourteen, there's very few consulting firms that do this, we have reached out to our counterparts, have you recently used Condrin Associates for this particular process? So we, we're kind of open for a discussion on this, see what your thoughts are, with it being a normal occurrence that's recommended every seven to ten years to maintain the accuracy of your job descriptions and your pay that's current within market, this is just a process that we'd like to move forward with, with any, just answering any questions that you'd like that I can possibly do.
Certainly, I mean, certainly seeing with roadmap tentative leading with excellence, it sounds like it's time to do it again, is my opinion, Mr. Waterman?
Waters, on the, the compensation study, that would also include the police department?
Yes, sir, it's all, is the particular proposal is saying a hundred and thirty-five, we're right around, fully staff will be thirty-five, a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and thirty-seven employees, that's including our two potential new hires for the K nine officers, be full staff, they will look at all job descriptions, review those, make sure that we are properly assessing and putting that Fair Labor Standard Act status to them, whether that's non-exempt exempt positions, make sure the physical requirements that are listed in the job descriptions, that they were, are more accurate. It gives us the opportunity, the Condrin Associates will come out and meet with approximately fifty percent of our staff, they will have questionnaires that will go out to all staff to fill out their job duties and responsibilities, they will come back and meet with the department heads and management to review those. Of course, people kind of get excited with those, they will list every one-off position, or one-off job they may do, so they help us conform those and bring those back in, and also with this particular proposal, they will also add support for another year past this, and with the timing on this is just really good because the project is set for January through March, it puts us in line with our budget discussions if we were to need to make any changes, we're not expecting to, there may be a few that will have to be looked at, but they'll look at placement in the scales, the, the positions, and where the pay should be for the different positions based on the personnel in those.
Okay, very good, very good, thank you. Just one last thing, so last year, we did vote to increase the pay for our, for our officers, what process did we use? Did we use the same, or was it just a
We went out to, to our counterparts, reached out to those, it was very noted that, that different entities were in a, I don't want to say a battle, but it were a battle for attracting officers especially and retaining those. I'm proud to say that ours is real close to being full, there's just a few, and that's with the two added, there's a lot of entities that are forty and fifty or more position, officers short, so I think ours is doing real well, we did that in an effort to make sure we maintained and attracted the best.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ms. Tullman?
Thank you. Ms. Waters?
Yes, sir.
Couple of follow-up questions, what cities have we inquired?
City of Holly Springs, City of Covington are the most recent ones, we have also talked with a couple entities that did not use Condrin Associates, they used another firm and were not happy within the last three years, and that was City of Woodstock, they were not happy, extremely happy with the results.
Was that one of the firms that was competing for the business here?
We have talked to them, yes, sir, we've talked to them in the past, they've competed in the past, there's only about four firms, there's Condrin Associates, River Green Solutions, Whit Perrin, and I've lost the other one, UGA I think is.
UGA used to do them, but their faculty members know where they are.
Okay.
So it's real limited on our, and with Condrin Associates doing our last one, they have a lot of our data already, so that is just building on what they've already done before.
Got it. See, I'm, I'm a big proponent of trying to make sure that we're staying, you know, market appropriate for all the reasons that you mentioned.
Yes, sir, and like I say, we were very fortunate and very appreciative of the council's approval of our recent pay changes and things, and it's very important, so we're more going for just ensuring, and it helps support our staff to know that we're going that step, we're putting that money out there to make sure that we got the proper job descriptions and that we are keeping them within market.
Absolutely, the messaging is, is definitely very strong. So you, you, you mentioned that this analysis should be done every seven to ten years, how long has it been?
Since two thousand fourteen, it's been ten years.
Okay, so it's, it's time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Do you need action tonight, or if we wait until the next meeting, does that give you time to get started in January?
Yes, ma'am, this is something we asked for the proposal, we wanted, of course, by all means, bring it to you, get any discussion, answer any questions we possibly can, and then as long as we have a vote by the next meeting, because they would like to start the practice, or start meeting with us and everything in January.
Ms. McGee?
Thank you. Ms. Waters, do we have a ballpark number for the cost of the study?
The cost of the study itself is thirty-nine, five thousand, thirty-nine thousand, five hundred.
Say again, please.
Thirty-nine thousand, five hundred.
Okay, thank you.
Now, that does include implementation costs, we won't know that till the process is done.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I will tell you that our last one done ten years ago was thirty-five thousand, so, or thirty-four, five, to be exact, it's five thousand or different, so for ten years, I'm only going at five thousand, I'm pretty good with that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Waters, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. McGee?
What column would funds come from to pay for this study?
Mr. Peppers?
We would pull it out of our contingency line item in the budget, and the other option is, is we get into the budget year, if we decided that we needed to, we could do a budget amendment and have those funds shifted over to the Human Resources Budget Fund.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waters.
Thank you.
Item B, discussion and possible action on two thousand twenty-three local maintenance and improvement grant, L-MIG, special purpose local option sales tax, SPOLOST paving change order for Laurel Canyon. Ms. Trooper?
Good evening, this is just some additional paving that we're looking to do for this year's project in Laurel Canyon, actually using the add-on fees. We're calling this a change order because it's a, a piggyback off of the contract that we use for SPOLOST and L-MIG this year, they're honoring all those prices. This would be topping four incomplete roads, Laurel Vista Drive, Summit View Court, Horizon Trail, and Sunrise Ridge. The price for that project is two hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and seven cents. We actually would cover the whole thing with the add-on fees that we have, Ms. Watson and I looked at the remainder of Laurel Canyon, this looks like this is pretty much it, and there's two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in that fund
Okay.
For the add-on fee, so this should take care of it, if it has to float into SPOLOST a little bit for some overages, then that's what we use as SPOLOST funds.
Okay, so basically adding this on to our existing contract to, to take advantage of those cost savings while those crews are operationalized and the add-on fees basically cover it, so we're taking care of our citizens in Laurel Canyon, sound like a good deal to me, Ms. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In keeping with explaining how the City of Canton's budget works tonight, could you explain again what it means when we say part of the paving will be paid for with add-on fees collected for this particular development? What specifically is an add-on fee?
Mr. Inger probably understands that more clearly than I do because it was before, it was implemented before.
I'll, I'll hop in there, when, back when a lot of the developers left during the recession, the city's standards for developing streets as part of those original developments did not require that the streets be top coated at the time, and so as those developments were coming out of bankruptcy or new developers were coming in, they were not expecting to do the streets, and so at the time, an add-on fee was calculated for the cost of top coating those streets within those neighborhoods, so as houses were being built and building permits were pulled on streets, the add-on fee was assessed to that particular builder, because you might have multiple builders who are working in neighborhoods, and so in this particular case, there was a pod that had been started but not finished, and so the add-on fees were collected as those houses were built, we've collected those over a period of time, all the construction on those particular streets are done, so now that the construction is done, we would go back in and top coat the roads with those add-on fees in the neighborhood. I will say this, our development standard has changed over the last several years too, where now we require the developers to go in and complete the streets and all of the amenities associated with streets, including sidewalks, streetlights, and what have you, before they can pull building permits, so we don't have the same issue that we had fifteen years ago.
I remember it well from River Green, but thank you for explaining it for the record.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ms. McGee?
I'd like to make a motion, please, that we approve the staff recommendation of completing these four streets in Laurel Canyon with the contractor Bartow paving, using the add-on fees, and if we need to pad it with SPOLOST, we can, not to exceed two hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and seven cents.
I know, because this is a change order, y'all are gonna faint because I'm gonna second it.
Well, the seven cents is the most important part.
So we have a motion, very explicit one, and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Let's get going. Item C, discussion of street acceptance for city maintenance for Town Mill Pod M Phase Two, Ms. Watson?
Thank you, so the streets in Town Mill Pod M Phase Two have been inspected by the city inspectors and have determined that, that those streets have met the requirements of the UDC and are now ready to be accepted by the city for maintenance, and I believe it's about fifteen hundred feet on Valdosta Drive that we're talking about, so, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions from Ms. Watson?
Just, I guess one, Mr. Mayor, so we'll, we'll vote on this at the next meeting, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yep, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Item D, discussion of proposed amendment to the Canton Down Payment Assistance Program, Mr. Patton?
Mr. Mayor, council members, if you will recall, we did discuss the Down Payment Assistance Program and the proposed amendment at the city council retreat, and to back up a little bit, there had been a request made from someone with a nonprofit to add the category of nonprofits to be eligible for up to ten thousand dollars, like protectors, educators, healthcare workers, City of Canton employees, as well as those that we call choice and which a member residing in the home is disabled. We carried that to the Canton Housing Team, had a discussion at the housing team meeting, they recommended approval of this amendment, brought it to city council at the retreat, we talked a good bit about down payment, one of the council members asked, how do you define nonprofit? I found a definition that I included in the attachment set for city council, you heard Mr. Rice talk about the number of nonprofits that he found online in Cherokee County, which was sort of surprising, and all, at the retreat, we also talked about the dollar amounts that are currently in the Down Payment Assistance Program of the seventy-five hundred and ten thousand, if you recall, I had mentioned to the council members, Georgia Department of Community Affairs, the state, with their Georgia Dream Program, they had increased their down payment assistance from seventy-five hundred to ten thousand, and the ten thousand dollar amount for the same categories, if you will, to twelve thousand five. There was a bit of a general discussion amongst council members about the amount of the down payment as to whether our currently adopted fees are good enough, if you will, or if we should think about increasing them, I also think that I recall that council members talked about the possibility of having one fee and doing away with categories as well. Within your handout package, I did provide you some information, if you will, to sort of help you understand the dilemma, if you will, associated with first-time home buyers and moving into homeownership, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, of which, from the housing forum this morning, the president elect of the Realtor Association indicated there are nineteen homes in all of Cherokee County on the market currently, three hundred thousand dollars or less, only two of those nineteen homes are move-in ready, but for a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, a twenty percent down payment, which has kind of always sort of been the standard, if you will, that down payment amount of seventy thousand dollars. If, and there are other financing packages out there, that's why I gave you some information relative to a ten percent down payment or a five percent down payment, and I carried that further for council to think about before making a decision on any type of amendment. If you think in terms of twenty percent of the cost of a twenty percent down payment or a ten percent down payment or a five percent, that gives you dollar amounts that you can think about relative to if you want to make any changes to our currently adopted dollar amounts. I also provided you with entry level pay for police I also provided you with entry-level pay for police before the academy and for police that are certified City of Canton employees and Board of Education employees. I talked to several mortgage loan officers, as well as going through about a dozen online applications and how much house can I afford, if you will. And as you can see from the information, with the Board of Education entry-level salary of $53,500, maximum amount that a loan could be provided is $200,000. Then I also provided some information that I found from Credible, which talks about FHA loans. FHA is doing some 96.5% mortgage options currently with a 3.5% down payment. And I provided you some options relative to loan amount cost from $297,000 to $337,000 with 3.5%, 10%, 15% down payment. Term rates, what the monthly fees would be, what the interest charges are and total amount of the loan at the end of the 30 years of what was paid. So that you have a little bit of additional information prior to this coming before you again in two weeks. Relative to what Mr. Rice talked about in the 10-minute public input, if City Council is inclined to look to add that other category, you could certainly amend the language that's proposed to say City of Canton nonprofit organizations would fall under that category for the higher assistance, if you will. And as we talked at the retreat, we have not received any application from many of the lending institutions. I keep talking with lenders about the program and that sort of thing. Currently, you know, interest rates are, on average, 7.4% to 8.4%. Georgia Home through Georgia DCA, they're their own lenders, if you will. They have a maximum home price, $350,000. And their interest on their loans is 6.4%. And they're doing 10% down payment loans. I'm here to answer any questions. I know I threw a lot of numbers at you.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. It's certainly a work in progress. We appreciate it and appreciate you providing all this information, which certainly makes things real for us. Certainly also appreciate Mr. Rice's comments and the work he did. It's nice to know that we have that many local nonprofits. I would certainly suggest that this is the City of Canton program. We would limit that to City of Canton nonprofits. But I'd also want to know how many, what's the number of nonprofits in the City of Canton? And then wonder if there's a, you know, if there's classifications within that that we should look at or consider, you know? But this is my initial feedback. But the FHA program, I think you're talking about with 3.5%, it sounded like it could possibly be closer to what we're looking at. I know the intent was to increase that down payment assistance to be able to even make this program viable. And, you know, that's one vehicle that could make it work. Certainly something that maybe we could take a look at. But I know it's complicated for a number of reasons. Mr. Tolan?
One question. Thanks for the presentation. Appreciate that. Aside from the FHA numbers that you mentioned and the Georgia Dream, what are the lenders telling you is, you know, with the economy and everything, is the going down payment percentage? Do you have a feel for that, Mr. Patton?
It varies. There's a lot that goes into it from the lending institutions, the mortgage lenders. They look at the stability of the work, credit scores, things of that nature. You know, 20% has sort of been the standard for a long time. There are quite a few lenders that are doing 10% down payment. I've not seen much below 10% other than the FHA program. I know there's some veteran loans out there that are 0% down for veterans.
And then as a follow-up, it's been a while since I've played in that world, but isn't your typical first-time home buyer, aren't they going to go after an FHA loan?
If I were a first-time home buyer, I would, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of the mark.
There are some limitations with FHA loans in regards to PMI and things of that nature that are required as part of the qualification for FHA loans. But knowing that it's a 3.5% down payment, most of the FHA loans are 30-year loans and all. But, you know, home prices are the big kicker in ownership right now.
Though the PMI is a painful pill to swallow, it beats not getting a home, I guess.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir.
And if I might quickly, at the Housing Forum this morning and discussions, just so the councils aware, from FMLS, the median sales price of homes for Cherokee County is $464,000.
Ms. Schmidt?
I guess my question might be for Mr. Dyer. But if we wanted to narrow the nonprofit definition for the purpose of our City of Canton-specific program, and we said City of Canton-based nonprofits, is there something more specific we could do to make that clear? Or what, how could we define that? Or can you look into that for the next, before the next?
We can give it some thought. I think we ran into that in talking about proclamations when you're trying to figure out how to define
Right.
what, where they may not have a physical location, but they're doing work here. It's a being a kind of a messy thing. I was, as you've been talking, I've been trying to think, is there some sort of category of nonprofit that you might say, well, that's who we would really like to help? And I don't know if you could come up with that, that a nonprofit that uses, that does a certain thing or in a certain area that you would want to encourage? But that would be another way to limit it.
Mr. Peppers?
If I could just make one comment on this, and I think I was the one that mentioned at the retreat, just getting rid of all categories. I mean, if the goal of the program is to promote homeownership within the city, then does it really matter what the person does for the job as long as we are helping someone get in homeownership? And if that's the case, you know, instead of making something more complicated and defining and asking our partners at financial institutions to help categorize individuals into these jobs that they could be in, but then they're not in them anymore and what that actually looks like? You know, just having a flat, you know, it's $12,500 or whatever the number has to be, and market that and try to get people into homeownership. I appreciate the work of the housing team and the housing committee. But if the goal is really to get people in homeownership using those ARPA funds and that's one of the things that that federal fund can be used for, it may be cleaner just to say, let's get it spent and make it happen.
I mean, I tend to agree. Again, I mentioned that we don't know what the intention of this is. But it gets, when you look at the realities of it, or you look at the market realities of how many homes are even available, then, you know, we need to deal with the reality of the situation and match that with the intention and simplify it to make it happen if that's what we want to do. So I think it's something we should consider based on the new information we've been given by Mr. Patton and the team.
And as Mr. Pepper said and talked about doing away with the categories, it would simplify the process, make it much easier to manage and handle the process, even with our lending institution partners. And I'm having more and more discussions with other lenders each week and expect our lending partners to keep increasing, if you will.
Anything else for Mr. Patton on this? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council member.
Item E, discussion to amend H2O Innovations Water and Sewer Operations Contract at a full-time, three-person line crew to current staff. Mr. Otavio?
Thank you. At the retreat, we talked about adding an additional crew to supplement the existing crew to allow them to replace aging infrastructure without having to design it and bid it and contract it out and ultimately being at a lot lower cost and the ability to do it a lot quicker. When their contract was renewed back in 2022, they provided options to include whenever we wanted or whenever you wanted to include them. And this is one of them. It is a three-person crew with associated equipment. It's not a dedicated crew per se, that this is all they're going to be doing. It would be individuals that can do, supplement the existing staff because the existing staff can do this work as well. So it would, it would basically augment the current staff and allow them to send people to do certain things that, like replacing all the water lines in the P Ridge section or some of the older galvanized lines in areas. And would also allow them to assist current staff in addressing just routine leaks and things like that. And so that's what this is, this is all about, is adding that crew and moving forward in that direction, so.
Thank you. I know we talked about this retreat and it seemed to make sense for a lot of, a lot of reasons. I believe we also discussed the possibility of looking at the potential projects this crew may handle that were going to be upcoming, whatever. Have we started that list or looking at?
We haven't really started it.
See what the costs associated or savings might be, or?
I'm not sure what the savings would be. I mean, obviously, you have this as the annual cost. And the biggest, well, not the biggest, but the additional cost would be just the cost of materials. You know, we wouldn't be any, having any markup on what contractors doing it. It would depend on the specific project.
And I would note too that we have, we have developments that, for example, were built in the 70s and 80s that utilize different types of pipes than we currently require in our standards. So the opportunity in having this crew would be able to go into those neighborhoods where we have an infrastructure that can sometimes be problematic and start working on long-term strategic plans to replace that infrastructure over time. The goal would be to get that done during this existing contract with H2O. You might not need the group after the existing contract, but might as well get some of those big fixes now. And especially as we've seen with labor and material prices being so high. And not just that, but the availability of contractors to do the work. We think it would be beneficial to move on this sooner rather than, rather than later.
Yeah, I agree. And we did discuss that there were things, you know, that they could work on while the contract was in place. And I just think it'd be nice to have that list of things that we can make sure we were maximizing, so we were getting the most out of that contract that we could.
The other, the other thing that they, they could also be working on is clearing right-of-ways. We have an awful lot of lines, both water and sewer, that are running cross-country that are, that are overgrown. And inevitably, that's where the breaks are going to be. And you spend a lot of time cutting and making roads just to get to the problem. So they could be doing that as well, so.
So it's contract written and so that they would clear right-of-ways? They'll do anything that we ask them to do, so it's not?
Yeah, so like I say, it's not a dedicated crew per se to say, all right, your, your task is to just work on water lines. I mean, the current, the current staff can, can do that as well, just not in their scope right now.
Okay. Any other questions?
One question, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Yes.
I noted in the proposal that there is some equipment, the pricing that they're proposing. Is that, is that a prorated use of that equipment for that period of time? Do you know how that's?
I don't have the breakdown on that. I can get that to you.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Ms. McGru?
Thank you. If you'll indulge me for a moment, from the National League of Cities, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency announced the availability of 20 million in grant funding through the Innovative Water Infrastructure Workforce Development Grant Program to address the need for building a pipeline of skilled, diverse water and wastewater utilities workers. Could we access this grant to help pay for this added expense?
We certainly can, can look into it, yes. I think I've sent that same, same link as well.
I can't hear you.
We started looking into it. It does have a quick turnaround around.
I think it was at the middle of the month, I think. Seventeenth is when it was doing.
So is that, you're looking into it still?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, I just want to make sure I heard it correct. It's not actually an added expense. It's, it's an expense that's in place of what we would have to hire out to separate contractors
It would be.
for the same work. Is that correct?
Anything else? Okay. Item F, discussion to amend H2O Innovations Water and Sewer Operations Contract to add a full-time maintenance manager at the Water Pollution Control Plant.
Yeah, might as well go for it all at once, right?
Yeah. You usually do, so.
As we approach startup of our new facility, there is going to be an awful lot of more maintenance and the sophisticated equipment. And in, in looking at it, we're going to need a full-time maintenance manager to just do the day-to-day maintenance operations of the hundreds of valves and sensors and everything else out there. So that was another option that was in their proposal. I think we looked at it with the assumption that we were going to have to go to 24/7 operation. We do not have to do that. And this, this amount that was proposed would come out of that, that line item. But that one is, is definitely needed. We don't want to spend all this money on a new plant and not be able to maintain it properly.
Definitely. We're in a different league with the new plants, so. I know we discussed this again at our retreat extensively. Are there any questions for Mr. Otavio on that item? So we'll be looking at both of these at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Peppers?
Good evening. Couple of items tonight. First of all, I did want to give you an update on our process for our search for our new police chief. We will be, we are currently working with three different professional search firms to provide proposals to the city for assisting us with that particular process. Those are due, we'll be in tomorrow. So we will be bringing to you a recommendation at your next meeting for you to consider an engagement with one of those firms to provide for the search for us. What that would look like is that firm would work on the recruitment side, would handle all of the applications and would assist the city manager's office with setting up interviews, any interview panels, stakeholder interviews, anything that would be part. interviews, any interview panels, stakeholder interviews, anything that would be part of that process. In initially looking and conversations with those groups, we're still thinking the timeframe's probably going to be about March, when that physician would come on board. And we will be, you know, as I've mentioned to our officers in the police department and the rest of our staff, we've been fully transparent in what we plan to do with that search process, and we'll be transparent as we go through the search process. But I did want to update you on that. Secondly, I wanted to let you know, we received notification that the Canton Housing Authority had received approval from the Department of Community Affairs for their nine percent funding application for the redevelopment of their existing product over at Oakside. So, so basically, the city that has not had any major housing investment in its housing authority over the last three budget cycles has received awards from the state to basically rebuild all of the existing Canton Housing Authority stock within the city. So we're very proud of that, the hard work of the Housing Authority on getting that. We'll have more information about that nine percent approval as it comes in from the state. Lastly, I wanted to mention that we, of course, do have an election on Tuesday. Some of the things that, that we've been working on internally, trying to assist the public with, sometimes there is confusion as it relates to election precincts. For example, our friends in River Green vote in the Teasley Precinct. It was named that way because they used to vote at the Teasley Middle School, but they are now voting at the Active Ace Academy, which was the former Teasley Middle School. Friends in the northern part of the city, Great Sky and Laurel Canyon, vote in the Canton Precinct, which has historically been at Canton First Baptist Church, but due to some construction projects they have, it's been moved to Teasley. So Teasley will not vote at Teasley. Teasley will vote at Ace, and Canton will vote at Teasley. So we've also been working on our social media and the city's website, provide some additional information. I had a meeting earlier this week with our supervisors down at the police department. We normally provide an officer at each of the precincts as part of the security for the precincts. So I was going over that information with them. They should be asked a question so that they could be prepared to assist residents with that information as well. We will also, sometimes it's very difficult for the public to find election results on the county site. It's just difficult to get to that place. So we'll be working with our team to provide those election results as they are at the hundred percent mark on the city's social media and the city's website as well on election night. I'm happy, yes, ma'am?
Mr. Peppers, and just to clarify, the City of Canton is not in charge of naming those voting precincts. Is that correct?
No. In fact, there's, all of those are the original names. Most of those are original names of precincts, so you still have precincts in the county like Lick Skillet, which is not a community that exists anymore, but they are all older precinct names that have been in place for decades.
They just need to vote early, then they don't have to worry.
Any other questions? Questions for Mr. Peppers? Thank you.
Thank you.
Just making sure there are no council introduced items. I had none at the agenda approval process. If none, I have one item, and that is discussion, possible action to approve an employment contract for the position city manager and authorize the mayor to sign. We have discussed this. We went over it extensively at our council retreat. I know we are all appreciative of the job our city manager does in being good stewards of the city and continuity of the services we provide our citizens. We are certainly dedicated to continuing the quality of that service and the great job Mr. Peppers has done, has done for our city and our citizens. We did, as part of this process, I want to thank Mr. Ingram, Ms. Waters, Mr. Dyer, and certainly council for all the, the work that's been done in looking at this, looking at the competitive pay for city managers around the state in close proximity by population, and reviewing those contracts and looking at GMA standards, and also thank council and staff. Mr. Peppers peers also for the three-sixty review that was done with the Carl Vinson Institute as part of this process and his review process. We looked at the competitive pay, saw where the average was pay. The new contract addresses some of those discrepancies. We still aren't getting, Mr. Peppers, I think personally where, where he deserves, or where, where the average or even the median is on, on some of his peers, but I think we're getting closer where he needs to be and should be. And the goal of this new contract is to keep the best city manager in the state in the City of Canton for the next five years and keep him doing the great work that he's been doing for us. So I know it's hard for him to sit over here and listen to this conversation, but he has no choice, so. But anyway, we have gone through this kind of meticulously, but I want to just have it on the agenda. Any discussions or questions about this?
I just have a comment.
Yes, Mr. Waterman.
Like, like you said, Mr. Ingram had provided us with information, comparison salaries of city managers across the state, and really in this North Georgia area, and still not, I think, where it should be, but it is, I think it's still an investment in Canton. I think you, Billy Peppers, has done an amazing job. I think that, and what most people don't realize is that city manager job is a twenty-four-seven job, stated in the contract. Break that down hourly, and it'll make you cry.
Make him cry.
But I just want to say for me, I appreciate everything that you have done for the city, everything that you've done for me, especially in my, you know, transition into a council role. Very, very helpful, and appreciate the heck out of you. But thank you.
Definitely. I hear from citizens all the time how responsive our city manager is when they have issues. From a personal perspective, the twenty-four-seven rings home. There have been many nights, three or four in the morning, calls, texts, Saturday mornings, Sunday mornings, you know, usually it's one of the first texts or conversations I have every morning, and usually one of the last ones I have at night. But he is always on call and available and does a great job, and I know we all appreciate that, so. Thank you, Mr. Waterman. Ms. Wilson?
I echo everything that the other council members have said privately and publicly as we were discussing this. So, Mr. Mayor, I enthusiastically would like to make a motion to approve the employment contract for the position of city manager for Mr. Billy Peppers and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Pose nay? All members voted for the motion. And I'll enthusiastically sign that contract. Thank you, Mr. Peppers. We appreciate you. For all those mayors that have been contacting me and like, we would love to have your city manager, he's off limits, so.
I'd like to say thank you, Mr. Peppers. I wouldn't have your job for any amount of money, juggling seven personalities, the general public, and our wonderful employees of a hundred and twenty-five-plus people. That's amazing. Thank you.
You are appreciated, so. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second. All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Pose nay? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.